Just give everyone a moment to come in from the waiting room. As a reminder, please mute yourself unless you are a member of the board. Good morning. This is the hearing before the Cannabis Board for the City of Boston. Today is Wednesday, October 21st, 2020. As a reminder, today's hearing is being conducted pursuant to temporary amendments to the open meeting law. That is what allows us to meet virtually. Today's hearing is being recorded and will be posted to the City of Boston's website. While the public is welcome and encouraged to attend, there will be no public testimony accepted at today's hearing. I will now introduce Chairwoman Kathleen Joyce.
Good morning and thank you, or afternoon I should say, thank you all for joining us at our third Cannabis Board voting hearing. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce my fellow commissioners, Commissioner Lisa Holmes, Commissioner Darlene Lombos, Commissioner John Smith, and Commissioner Alejandro Sanquian.
Thank you. And before we begin, I am going to ask Commissioner Smith if he would take a moment to make a statement.
Thank you, Leslie, and good afternoon, everyone. I would like it noted, just for the record, that I am going to recuse myself from item three on the agenda today due to my affiliation with BSNI, Dudley Street Neighborhood Initiative.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Smith. With that, I will call the first item. The applicant is the Grazin Group LLC. The proposed license premise is 533 Washington Street. This is a retail recreational cannabis dispensary license application. The proposed hours of operation are 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. This is a certified equity applicant. The date of the initial application was May 10th, 2019. The date of the initial filing with ISD, July 9th, 2019. The date of the community meeting, November 25th, 2019. This is a buffer zone applicant. We will begin with comments from the chairwoman and each of the commissioners. Chairwoman Joyce?
Thank you, Leslie. And just to be clear, so we'll all, we'll all comment on the application and then we'll go back and discuss a motion.
We will return for a motion, then open it to any questions on the motion, and then proceed with a second.
Okay, thank you. This first application before us, the Grazin Group, which seeks to open up a retail establishment in Codman Square. They have shown and demonstrated through their application a proven track record of their commitment to diversity and inclusion. So they scored very high for me in that category. There is a lot of community support and support from local elected officials for this application. This site has access to public transportation and they indicated in their testimony that they would be seeking, or that they have five off-street parking spots that would be available to customers while they are within a buffer zone, meaning this location is within a half a mile of another marijuana establishment that we have already approved. I do believe that they show, they demonstrate the higher standard that this board is looking at to resolve that buffer zone issue. This, by granting this license, I don't think it would negatively impact the surrounding neighborhood. And I think that this license would be in harmony with the intent of the Boston zoning code and that established the buffer zone.
Commissioner Holmes, do you have comments?
Just the fact that I did review their updated security plan and I saw they took the language out about the armed guard on the premises and everything. So as far, that was the only concern I had last week, so I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. Just want to say, I think it fits with the intent of us establishing dispensaries. I like their diversity and inclusion plan and their support and investment in the community. Thank you.
Commissioner Lombos?
Thanks so much. I very much agree. Very high scores for me on the diversity and inclusion and obviously the community support. My only thing is that I'd really love to see those really high goals on employment plan met. So just whatever we can do as a board and TA to support this applicant, would love to just be on record for that. I thought very strong application. Thank you.
Commissioner Sanquian?
No, not much to add. Just I agree with my fellow commissioners and the chairwoman that it was a really strong, really strong application. Really appreciated just the amount of support both by electeds and in the community. And I think it's a, it's a great equity applicant.
Thank you. Chairwoman Joyce, do you have a motion?
Sure. I make a motion to grant this license with the condition that the applicant obtain a variance from the ZBA within one year.
Are there any questions regarding the motion? Do we have a second?
A second?
All in favor? Aye. And there are none opposed? Second item, the applicant is Sanctuary Medicinals, Inc. The proposed license premise is 253 to 255 Tremont Street. This is a retail recreational cannabis dispensary license application. The proposed hours of operation are 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. This is a non-equity applicant. The date of initial application is July 17th, 2018. The date of initial filing with ISD is July 17th, 2018. And the date of the community meeting is March 5th, 2019. Chairwoman Joyce?
Thanks, Leslie. I couldn't help but begin my evaluation of this application by focusing on the lack of community support and outright opposition. It wasn't just lack of support. I do realize some neighborhoods are better situated and more organized to get some of that opposition or support to the case B together. But I acknowledge that some of this, and some of the support that came in, I want to acknowledge, did come in from businesses outside the community. And I really do think that this application and what we heard from the opposition is something to take a serious look at. As far as this location, I think the impact that this would have on the neighborhood as a whole has to really be taken seriously. This is a neighborhood. They've worked for years to rehabilitate themselves as a neighborhood and from what was once an adult entertainment zone. I do want to note, there was a lot of testimony on the record about this being within the buffer zone, school buffer zone, and it is not. That being said, the fact that it is located close to a school is something you would have to, I would have to take into consideration. There's no off-site parking. The testimony was that, that customers would be in and out within 10 minutes. And that just draws my attention to the fact that there is so much congestion, so much traffic already. People would be live parking, having their friend or their relative go in for 10 minutes while they circled the neighborhood. And I think as a regulator, I'm obliged to take a look at the appropriateness of this applicant at this location. And I am concerned by the high traffic, the congestion in this densely populated neighborhood, and also concerned by the fact that there is very little community support.
Thank you. Commissioner Holmes?
I have to agree with the chairwoman, although I have no opposition to the business. I just don't think the location is ideal. I agree with everything the chairwoman said.
Commissioner Smith?
I'm going to probably weigh into that and just say pretty much the same things that the other two commissioners have said. And it was just really the lack of community support and somebody mentioned about them not offering enough specifics, which I also felt myself in some ways. I would say the caveat is there was somebody who testified that talked about that there was a lot of opinion and not facts. And so I think this sounds like reconnecting with the community and building a deeper relationship that's sort of fact-based. Thank you.
Commissioner Lombos?
Yes, I agree with my fellow commissioners. The lack of community support is very concerning. And it actually scored low for me, not just on community support. So when asked the question, when I asked the question about their commitment to hire locally, 1.5 miles away, I asked why, how they would overcome the hurdle of having so much community opposition when their intent was to hire locally. And I wasn't quite satisfied with their answer. I think that the goals around employment don't really match what's happening in the community there. So again, not just about the community support, but I do, I'm concerned about their employment plan as well. So scored low for me all the way around. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioners Sanquian?
So I agree with my fellow commissioners and, you know, I think it's important to note that the community that we're talking about, Chinatown, has historically been not at the table when making very important decisions about their quality of life, i.e. the highway that goes right through their neighborhood and has caused just generational climate issues and asthma issues for, for their population. And I think, you know, given the huge amount of opposition from, from all, from all organizations in Chinatown. And Chinatown, although small, is a very, very diverse in terms of ideological thought. I know a lot of those organizations well, having worked as a director of Moya. And there are a lot of things they don't agree on. And to see them all come together and have really strong opposition to this, to this proposal just makes me feel like we are in a particularly important moment with this, with this community to do right by them as they continue to fight for preservation and against what has been just systemic climate injustice. I do want to say, I did ask, I did push Sanctuary on their diversity numbers and they did supply them from their other locations. And I was actually quite pleased with them. So I, I think that, you know, in terms of that, I think maybe another location would, would work. But I can't, in good faith, go against a community that's already been through so much.
Thank you. Chairwoman Joyce?
Okay. So again, I just want to frame the motion as it relates to the location and not the operator. I don't feel that the applicant can submit a new application for this specific location that would be appropriate to this board. So based on that, I make a motion to reject this application.
A second?
And I just have a question. I'm sorry. Is it with prejudice or without prejudice?
With prejudice would prevent the applicant from, again, applying at this specific location for a year. Without, without prejudice would not prevent that. However, if this is rejected with prejudice, the applicant can still apply at another location.
So with prejudice?
So the motion is to reject with prejudice. Do we have a second for with prejudice?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And none opposed? The third item, the applicant is Legal Greens LLC. The proposed license premise is 693 Dudley Street. This is a retail recreational cannabis dispensary license application. The proposed hours of operation are 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. This is a certified equity applicant. The date of initial application was May 14th, 2019. The date of filing with the Inspection Services Department was June 25th, 2019. The date of the community meeting was September 4th, 2019. This is a buffer zone applicant. And for the record, Commissioner Smith has recused himself. Chairwoman Joyce?
Thank you. I just want to note again, for the record, that I am aware this is a certified equity applicant. They do have support, but I think their entire plan is vague and lacking details that this board would be looking for. I think it's aspirational and that they would benefit, benefit from some technical assistance from the Office of Economic Development.
Thank you. Commissioner Holmes?
Yeah, I agree with Chairwoman Joyce. I felt that they were, their presentation was, was a little vague at best. And that I think, and it's only because I think they're new and they're just getting into the business. And I agree that they could use a little help. Their intent is in the right. I just think they could use a lot of, a lot of tutoring and help along to get their business up and going.
Thank you. Commissioner Lombos?
I, I agree with the two women here. I really want to support this application. I think they're definitely headed in the right direction and would love to see a real connection with the technical assistance that we provide through this, is it OED, the office, the equity office. Just would love to see support for this application. I think they're headed in the right direction. Would like to just see a little bit more robust application.
Commissioners Sanquian?
I would agree with my fellow commissioners. I, you know, really went over and over on this application and searching through the, everything that was submitted and trying to find a little more meat there to see that maybe it was just in different places and just wasn't, you know, coalesced all in one place. But I agree that I think the intent is, is really good. I, you know, of course, we have a commitment to equity applicants, but that I agree that it would need a bit more work and, and technical assistance to get it to the next level.
Thank you. And for the record, pursuant to the ordinance which established the board, the Office of Economic Development, separate from this board, does have technical assistance available to certified equity applicants. Chairwoman Joyce?
I make a motion to defer this application until they can come back to us with a plan that builds upon some of the things that we've mentioned at the hearing and at this meeting.
And the board does have the ability to defer indefinitely. And if the applicant seeks to take advantage of that technical assistance, they can reach out once they have done so and ask to be placed back on the agenda. Chairwoman, would you, is the motion to defer indefinitely?
Yes, until they're ready to come back, if they decide to come back.
Are there any questions on the motion? Is there a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? And we will reach out to the applicant to connect them with the Office of Economic Development. Item four, the applicant is Fairway Botanicals, Inc., doing business as The Hempus. The proposed license premise is 882 to 886 South Street. This is a retail recreational cannabis dispensary license application. The proposed hours of operation are 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. This is a non-equity applicant. The date of initial application was July 20th, 2018. The date of initial filing with ISD was August 29th, 2018. The date of the community meeting was December 5th, 2018. Chairwoman Joyce?
Thanks, Leslie. They scored very high for me in the diversity and inclusion in the employment plan. And I did question them at the hearing about their one-to-one goals for, for hiring minorities and women. So I'm interested to see how that plays out in, once they get up and operating. There is a lot of support from the community and from the district city councilor. And I'd like to note for the record, there is support from the previous district city councilor as well. While they don't have off-street parking, which is something I do take a look at when I see these applications, there are several other options in the neighborhood. And I don't think the parking will have a negative impact on this particular neighborhood at this location.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes, again, they scored really high for me all around, but I was particularly impressed with the fact that they both live within walking distance of this establishment, which means that they're really invested in this community. They live there. They're going to ensure that they have a business that lives up to the standards set by this board. Again, as you know, I did question about the commuter rail parking, being familiar with that area. But there are a number of municipal lots, or a few municipal lots in the area, and they have access to public transportation. So I don't think the traffic or the parking will be a big problem. So again, scored very high. I'm happy to see them take that ownership in the neighborhood.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. We questioned them on their commitment to hire Boston residents. I think they're going to correct that in their records, so they will. And also working with the C3RN to really train equity applicants to enter the cannabis industry. So all of that rounded out pretty good for me. So thank you.
Commissioner Lombos?
Yeah, I would agree with my fellow commissioners. It was solid application all the way around. Again, just with the correction of the non-resident versus resident hiring. That was a, that was an unfortunate typo, but very solid application. I don't have much to say about it. Thank you.
Commissioners Sanquian?
I agree with my fellow commissioners. In terms of the one-to-one, as I had mentioned before, would be great to see just more specific hire, that they would create more specific hiring goals around communities of color and those most disproportionately impacted by the, the very flawed war on drugs. But overall, I think it was a great application. I too think very highly of having someone so, you know, within the neighborhood who's, who's applying. I know that area extremely well and feel like in terms of parking and transportation would, would not be a problem. So overall, very, very satisfied.
Thank you. Chairwoman Joyce?
I make a motion to grant this application.
Are there any questions on the motion? Is there a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And none opposed? Item five. The applicant is Urbus C3 Dorchester LLC. The proposed license premise is 43 Freeport Street. This is a retail recreational cannabis dispensary license. The proposed hours of operation are 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. This is a certified equity applicant. The date of initial application is February 26th, 2020. The date of filing with Inspection Services is February 19th, 2020. And the date of the community meeting is August 20th, 2020. Chairwoman Joyce?
Thanks, Leslie. I think this is a very strong application. I think it's a good location. They had a lot of community outreach and back and forth with the community. And there's a lot of community support for this application. I want to note something that stood out to me in their security plan. And I'm interested to see how this actually plays out in practice. Visitors have to leave their IDs with security and a lot of the other security and operations plans until they, till they make their purchase. A lot of the other security and operations plans rely upon a scanner and then backup ID or invisible determination that they are over 21 and sometimes a backup ID. So I haven't seen this before. And they also plan on maintaining a visitor log for three years. So I'm interested to see how this process works out.
Commissioner Holmes?
Now, a strong application, very good community support. Again, the location is, is an ideal location and just a strong application. I support it.
Commissioner Smith?
No issues. I think it was pretty strong. Thank you.
Commissioner Lombos?
Strong application. I did want to just point out one thing that I thought was really interesting in terms of the diversity and inclusion and meeting their goals. They've also wrote into, if they don't reach their goals, actually penalizing themselves, which is really just interesting and also just shows their commitment to reaching those goals and very supportive of even just this self-criticism that they have and baked in. It's, it's, it's a really solid application. Thank you.
Commissioners Sanquian?
I have to agree with my fellow commissioners. Really strong all around. Clearly a lot of experience in the industry along with the partnership with, with an equity applicant and someone who is building their own establishments in the city. And I, and I like that relationship and that, that what could be, I think, a mentoring relationship. I would love to see them continue, do that with other potential cannabis operators across the city. I think they're in a good position to do that. I love the location and I think that it provides a really, you know, safe, safe space. And, you know, the neighborhood agrees. So overall, very strong.
Thank you. Chairwoman Joyce?
Thanks, Leslie. I make a motion to grant this application a retail license at this location.
Are there any questions regarding the motion? Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
And there are none opposed? Item six, the applicant is Sierra Naturals, Inc. The proposed license premise is 827 to 829 Boylston Street. This is a retail recreational cannabis dispensary license application. The proposed hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. This is a non-equity applicant. The date of the initial application was August 21st, 2018. The date of filing with ISD was August 22nd, 2018. The date of the community meeting was April 8th, 2019. Chairwoman Joyce?
Thank you, Leslie. This was a very strong application. And before I get into the details of the application, I do want to acknowledge for the record that we did receive opposition, written opposition late last night from Compassionate Organics. And it was also shared with us at the transactional hearing. And I want to note for the record that it is my belief that this is distinct from the Sierra Naturals application. In the Sierra Naturals application, the individuals who met with the community the first time, Mr. Relinger, he sold his 100% interest in the company. And it was that sale and the fact that he was the one who met with the community that precipitated the Office of Emerging Industries to request that he have a second community meeting. And from a licensing perspective, that's what we look at. We want to look at the operators and how the community feels about this particular operator at a particular location. So looking at it through the licensing lens, this corporation-to-corporation transfer, despite the fact that the entity name stayed the same, would be treated as a new application and would require a new community meeting. We can get into questions about that from the other commissioners if you have any later on. But back to this actual application, they had a very strong safety and security plan. The community is in favor of them, strong support for this application. They've taken the feedback from the neighborhood and they've worked it into their operations. There is no buffer zone conflict at this moment. I do recognize that this is a prime Boston location and that this is a non-equity applicant. So I would be looking very closely at other applications within this area to be sure that this particular spot is not locked down just for this non-equity applicant.
And for the record, just before we move on, Chairwoman, you're, you're differentiating between this application before the board today for Sierra Naturals, Inc. versus the correspondence received from Compassionate Organics?
Yes. Did I misspeak?
I think you just might have flipped the two.
Okay, yes. But I'm speaking today about Sierra Naturals, who is on the agenda and I believe has been rightfully put on the agenda. And Compassionate Organics, that is not before us today, but is in the queue for a future meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Holmes?
No, no, no opposition. It's like the chairwoman said, it's a prime location. They really worked hard with the community to make sure that they met the needs of the community. They listened and they did incorporate a lot of what the community requested into their application. The fact that they're willing to put in a handicap ramp to make it accessible for people was a, was a win for me. So no opposition.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes, thank you. No opposition. I would like Chairwoman Joyce, I'm just thinking that it'd be interesting to see what the community, how the community would respond to like an equity applicant, given that primary. But outside of that, that's not Sierra's problem. I don't have any opposition to it. Thank you.
Commissioner Lombos?
Yeah, thank you. I agree. It's a very strong application. I am impressed. It's a non-equity applicant. And it really does have diversity and inclusion all through, especially around employment. It's good to see this is a union shop. I'm, I'm really pleased to see consideration around diversity and inclusion in all aspects of the application from this non-equity applicant. So I think it's a very strong application and I'm very excited to see a union shop.
Commissioners Sanquian?
I agree with my fellow commissioners. Thought it was a really strong application. I do want to note that they did respond to my request for demographics across their other locations. And, you know, and we're very honest about the fact that they weren't meeting their diversity goals there and that they were working on them. And they were very, very clear about where, you know, where they needed to, to improve. And I, and I really appreciated that. So overall, really strong.
Thank you. Chairwoman Joyce?
I make a motion to grant this application a license at this location.
Are there any questions regarding the motion? Is there a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And none opposed? With that, we will move to all the new business. There is a request for a motion to post the draft amendment to the board's rules and regulations regarding the transferability of licenses and changes to beneficial interests granted by the board. This would trigger a 30-day public comment period and the same would be posted in a newspaper of general circulation. Is there a motion to publicly post this and open the commentary?
I make a motion.
Is there a second?
A second?
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seeing none opposed? There is a request for a motion to request the executive secretary draft an amendment for the board's consideration and discussion to the rules and regulations regarding holiday hours of operation. This is being done to maintain consistency with the holiday hours of operations for retail package stores from which these licenses were based on the same, the same regulatory standards. Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? There is a motion to request the executive secretary to review the hearing dates for the November and December hearings and to work with the members of the board to amend the same to ensure there are no scheduling conflicts given the holidays. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Seeing none opposed? Item four, New Dia LLC has applied for a recreational cannabis retail dispensary license to be exercised at 48 to 62 Brookline Avenue. The applicant is an equity applicant. The board deferred the previous vote on this application to allow for the submission of supplemental information regarding the security and operations plan. Chairwoman Joyce, do you have any comments on the subsequently submitted plan?
No, I don't. I appreciate them taking the time to supplement the plan they had originally submitted to the board to take into consideration the special circumstances around this location, specifically game days and other events at Fenway.
Commissioner Holmes, do you have any comments?
The only comment is in their security plan, they seem to focus on, you know, really only focus on game days and when there were events going on with security. But I would just ask that they do that all days, not just game days and event days at Fenway Park, but Friday nights and Saturday nights, which can be just as busy as a game day or event at Fenway Park.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
No comment at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Lombos?
No comment. I, I somewhat defer to Commissioner Holmes around her security. She's so diligent about the security. So as long as she's cool with it, I'm cool with it. And, and also the application, when we heard, I thought was a strong application. So I just, I'm glad that they submitted a supplemental for this.
Commissioner Sankeen?
Agree. I supported the application. I thought it was really strong and appreciate the update on security.
Chairwoman Joyce?
Thanks, Leslie. I think I'm going to defer to Commissioner Holmes to make the motion.
Commissioner Holmes?
Gee, what the pressure. Okay, I make, I make a motion that we grant the license to New Dia LLC.
And just to be clear, this is a, a buffer zone applicant. So it will be a conditional grant pending the, obtaining a variance from the ZBA. Are there any questions regarding the motion?
I have a question, Leslie. We're going to ask them to expand upon the security and operations plan to reflect Commissioner Holmes's request that it be taken into consideration for Friday and Saturday nights outside of special events at Fenway?
Absolutely. We can make that change and add it as a condition.
Okay.
Do we have a second for the motion to grant conditionally pending variance relief for the buffer zone and pending clarification in the security and operations plan, incorporating busy weeknights in addition to game days and special events? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And there are none opposed? Items five and six do not require any action, but for the record, Suns Mask, Inc. has requested reconsideration for its application for a co-located recreational cannabis retail dispensary, medical dispensary, and manufacturing license to be exercised at 931 Hyde Park Avenue. This is a non-equity applicant. The applicant will be given eight minutes to present at the board's November transactional hearing. Item six, Dragon Vapers LLC has requested reconsideration for its application for a recreational cannabis retail dispensary license to be exercised at 354 to 358 Chesnut Hill Avenue. The applicant is a non-equity applicant. The applicant will be given eight minutes to present at the board's November transactional hearing. And with that, there are no additional items before the board. Thank you, everyone, for participating, and thank you, everyone, who joined us today.
Thank you.
Thanks.